Hope the lots by this, the next one is all about vibration which means please put your mobiles on vibration mode or put them on silent. Because what's coming up for the next one and a half hour is going to be imminently important to each one of you. We have some very, very respected and eminent speakers in the house this morning. And I'm sure that the wisdom of experience, wealth and the presentations that they share with you. I'm sure each one of you will have some very important takeaways this morning. As I welcome the members of Madras Gold and Diamond Traders Association. Let me point out a couple of very important things to you. This event is brought to you by Eventil Global Advisory Private Limited, the company that organizes the conference. This is a very special session on jewelry which is curated by MMTC PAM. And when we talk about MMTC PAM, I think a very special mention needs to go out to the President Works MMTC PAM. Mr. Ankur Goyal sir for his inspiration and efforts in organizing the excellent line of experts for this morning. They have been handpicked for you and I can only hope that you will have a very engaging session. Let me also tell you that each one of the presentations that you're going to be seeing this morning. Have already been seen and have been vetted by the organizers. And let me tell you that it's a wealth of knowledge that will come your way. And you will get to share these presentations later on the website, so not to worry about that, about that, you can rest assured. Thirdly, as all of you are aware, the President Srijayant Tilal Chalani ji has got a bit of, you know, he's got caught up in traffic. But nonetheless, in order to kickstart this session today morning. We have none other than the Vice President of Madras Gold and Diamond Traders Association. Please put your hands up for Mr. Gunashaker of Kota Gunashaker Jewelers. As he joins us on this stage to deliver a welcome address to kickstart this morning. I think we can make this a little louder, let me see the energy, thank you, Mr. Gunashaker sir please.
Good morning, I welcome you all to this special session of India Gold Conference 2022. This session is for the jewelers manufacturing business. Make the best use of this opportunity sir. Because it is the, as our madam told, see South India and Chennai particularly the jewelry hub of India sir, we can say. Because most conversions gold jewelry happens here. Because we are very near to Coimbatore, Coimbatore you know it, manufacturing center, one of the best manufacturing centers in India. And moreover, mostly in South Indian people come to Chennai for their business, for their purchase to Chennai. The mostly jewelers will come sir, so please make use of this. I am very happy to welcome Titan Co Limited, Mr. Ankur Goyal, MMTC, PAMP India Private Limited. Mr. GK Venkata Gopal, Emerald Jewelers Industry India Limited. Mr. Subham, Eventful Global Advisory, these peoples are very experienced people. They are going to speak about what is in jewelry trade. Please make use of their speech best to our future trade, thank you, once again, I welcome you all sir.
Gentlemen, there is before I invite our first speaker for the technical session this morning. There is just something very quickly that I want to do, it is a thirty second exercise. But you will clearly understand the reason why each one of you has been invited here this morning for a curated session. Ladies, we don't have any ladies here, so gentlemen and the very much gentlemen, can I please request each one of you to close your eyes? Please close your eyes in all earnestness and I don't want anyone peeking at me. Okay, now that your eyes are closed, I want you to raise your right hand up in the air. And with only one finger, wherever you feel is the north, I want you to point to the north. Wherever in your mind you feel is the north direction. Whichever way, I mean wherever your mind tells you that yes, this is north. Okay, are we all pointing towards north? Yes. So now keep your hands up, statue, keep on pointing towards your north, wherever you were pointing. And freeze your positions there, wherever you feel the north was, freeze your positions. Now gently open your eyes with your positions frozen. Gentlemen, all of us in one room, all of us using the same right hand, none of us are pointing together in the same direction. In somebody's mind, this is north, in somebody's mind, that is north, in somebody's mind, that is north. All I'm trying to say is when we as an industry with our eyes closed, can't even come on a consensus as to where our north is. Can you imagine the amount of consensus you all need as an industry to move forward? And that is the entire idea, that all of us come together on one platform. We deliberate on the issues, we discuss the issues, form a common consensus where everyone is looking ahead in the same direction. And that is why with that thought and philosophy in mind, the India Gold Conference brings to you the industry leaders. And like-minded stakeholders and players every year. I would like to start this technical session by inviting somebody very eminent, the Senior Manager Upstream. For Titan Company Limited's Jewelry Division, Hosud. I'm talking about a gentleman who's been working with the company for the last six and a half years. He's developed master alloys to increase the strength of high karatage gold alloys. Developed tarnish resistant silver alloys and currently managing upstream waxing and casting. Enhancing the scientific aspects of gold jewelry production to improve the productivity and quality. As well as reducing the cost and the delivery time in the same breath. Gentlemen, please put your hands up for Mr. Arun Prakash Selvarajan, let's give him a huge round of applause.
Hope I'm audible? So I'm going to talk for next fifteen minutes in the title, "The Scientific Approach for Investment Casting." And this will be followed by a question and session for about five minutes. But what's a new thing about this session would be something which we would like to learn or share our knowledge on waxing, investment, alloying and casting, these are the four topics. Then a large chunk of work that's in upstream, that is mold making, waxing, then goes to investment, then alloying, casting. Post-casting operation, these are upstream operations and then follow with downstream operations. It will be venture and polishing and then you get the final jewelry. So I'll be concentrating on this waxing, investment, alloying, casting. These are all placed at eighty-five to ninety degrees to the main trunk. So how often do we see a tree which is, the pieces are kept? Ninety degrees, my laser point is not working currently, so usually the trees would be around forty-five to fifty degrees, this part will be. But you'll increase the yield drastically if you place the pieces, that is the wax pieces at eighty-five to ninety degrees. And never in nature there is a path, that is, if you consider tree. Every single leaf of a tree will have one tube which is connected to the root of the plant. So there should be only one stream which the gold flows to the last part of the prong or the of a ring or something. There should not be multiple parts wherein you increase the turbulence. You should be always one single path to reduce the turbulence, you get to have a streamlined flow. So have one sprue which is having a good thickness, it should not be turbulent. And make sure your pieces are kept around eighty-five degrees to ninety degrees maximum, not more. That does, don't keep at forty-five degrees, it will be detrimental later. And avoid the turbulence as much as possible. So this is what I was talking about, the left side tree you see that is around forty-five degrees, you put the pieces at, this is wax tree. And you can roughly put around eighteen numbers. But if you use the same height of the tree with ninety degrees angle, you'll be able to put forty-five numbers. So this is the increasing the yield for the same quantity of gold. And always, always, split your designs into category, what I mean by category is thin pieces in one single tree, thick pieces in another tree. Do not mix thin and thick. So this is actual wax tree you see here and that category is thin. So have all the thin components to one tree, do not have a mix of thick and thin. And this is one of the often seen problem, that is investment inclusion. What happens is the investment powder, that is the after burnout, this powder flow breaks and flows along with the gold and get deposited anywhere in the product. You see, this is where it looks like a porosity but it's not a porosity. Near to the prongs, these areas, these areas, these are all rough, looks like porosity but not porosity. This is where the investment powder has broken and gone there and solidified. And after water blasting, you remove the powder, then becomes this. So the reason for this majorly is because of use of wax which is not properly fixed. And after the removal of wax, your investment looks like this. And the last picture you see that there are pieces of investment that is broken while you pour the gold. And that broken investment is taken through the gold stream and gets deposited elsewhere. So what is the solution for this? This is a sticky wax and this is a wax pot, we have put that sticky wax in a wax pot and before rounding, you just keep that wax piece. Use the sticky wax pot, take a small amount of wax, then place it into the tree. This is as simple as this. So now we have a layer of that sticky wax which is smooth and is not having rough edges. Now the investment powder is very smooth, it doesn't cut the flow of the gold and that doesn't got broken and then goes to the wax. So this has considerably increased the defects, reduced the defects rather. And next I'm going to talk about this wax burnout. Most of us will be having a split flask, that is, once you, in the while you are being burnout, you can cut open the flask and see. There will be a trace of wax. So what the LFT image is having is the wax that didn't completely melt and come out, but it has gone into the investment. So this is very, very bad to the casting. So what happens is, this will create a problem called, I'll come to the next slide. But how to avoid this, I will tell this like here, by adding some calcium nitrate. Calcium nitrate actually breaks into, it's giving oxygen and that oxygen is actually burning off that carbon. So the reaction goes like this, calcium nitrate at thermal decomposition for around five hundred degrees Celsius. Get into calcium oxide, nitrogen oxide and oxygen. So this oxygen will burn the carbon and goes into carbon dioxide later. So add calcium, this is around twenty gram per liter of water, you mix it with water and then use it to the investment casting. And this is how a clean investment split flask would look like. So gas is bad, gas is bad for casting. So when you heat the investment, usually you will not heat above seven fifty degrees Celsius, it would be around seven twenty max. If you heat it beyond seven fifty, this reaction happens, calcium sulfate is there in investment. That releases SO gas and oxygen, that oxygen is, okay, but SO gas is not good. This gas will come as gas porosity. This will happen when you have a liquid gold temperature very high. When the liquid gold temperature comes in contact with the investment powder, this reaction happens and all these small, small gas bubbles comes and then goes in the gas process. And if you have the carbon left in the wax earlier, that calcium sulfate reacts with carbon to give carbon dioxide and calcium sulfate. So this gas is again a detrimental gas, so as far as possible, avoid any gas in the system as to best to have low temperature at calcium nitrate. So remember, gas is bad. While talking about investment powder, we know that investment powder consists of silica, silica in a very, very fine particle. So fine silica particle is detrimental to head, it's going to cause silicosis. Silicosis are non, it doesn't have any medicine, once started, it is going to grow and grow and grow. So it will, it is like a small pieces of glass cutting your lungs. So the best thing is to avoid this, use a PPE, proper PPE. Wherever, there are two possibilities, one while mixing the investment powdered water, that powder itself could be one. Or while de-wasting, that is, after removing the tree from the investment, you put in water, that time the steam and the powder comes off. That should also not be consumed, that should not be taken inside. So always use proper PPE. And this slide talks about the cracks, so now we are in alloying. In alloying, there are possibilities of oxides cracks. So oxide is majorly from zinc oxide or copper oxide. So this oxide, how to prevent that is what I'm going to explain in two slides. So oxygen is present everywhere, so and we increase the temperature, the oxygen reaction would be increasing in alloying. So what we need to do is either argon, if it is costly, you can go with nitrogen. During alloying process, either of these gases you can use. And use a demetalized water, so demetalized water doesn't contain much of a dissolved gas or gas in it. And use isopropyl alcohol, that is around ten percentage isopropyl alcohol in water. So this alcohol will consume the oxygen in water and doesn't give the free oxygen to react with the alloying metal. Copper oxidizes, zinc oxidizes, silver doesn't oxidize, gold doesn't oxidize. So we are safe with silver and gold, but not with copper and zinc. And while we add the alloying element to the gold, always add a divisional charge, that is, you add some. After melting the gold, you add some charge, twenty-five percent charge, now the metal will melt, let's say reduce the temperature. Again, the second, add the second charge, reduce the temperature, add the third charge, reduce the temperature, add the fourth charge. Now we are at very low temperature, the oxidation and the loss of elements in oxide will be less. So this is the best practice of alloy in order to conserve all the silica and the grain refiners and the de-oxidizers to put in place. Otherwise, this will be reacting and it will be going into slab. And there is no sure shot thing that there cannot be any oxides, oxides will be present. But how to remove the oxide is using a filtering mechanism. So these are called auto valves, that is while alloying, you put this kind of a fine hold graphite sieves. So this will trap all the slags which is going to form at the last part of this thing. So you will not be having this kind of tree with slags and cracks and the last part of the button. Yeah, this slide talks about the melting temperature, the temperature rather. So here the graph talks about the left side is the liquidest temperature of the alloy. So I'm going to melt it, let's say it's going to melt at nine hundred and eighty degrees Celsius. And anything beyond nine eighty is going to be superheating. Superheating is, it's liquid and it's going to increase the temperature. While I pour it, it will have some fluidity for that temperature to come and then when it reaches nine eighty degree, it solidifies. And like any liquid, liquid gold also expands. So the more you increase the superheating temperature, the mold, gold is going to expand. And when it contracts, when it solidifies, it contracts and it's going to create cracks and porosities and that. So always remember to have a very slightly higher superheating temperature, do not increase the temperature to a lot, very slight. And the flask temperature is the most critical thing, so the flask should be also at a lower temperature. In order to reduce the metal mold reaction, that earlier side which I talked about the gases release when the hot gold comes in contact with the investment powder. So the flask temperature can be maintained depending upon the thick, thin of the wax tree. If it is going to be thick, it can reduce the flask temperature, for example, five hundred and fifty degrees Celsius. And if it is going to be thin, slightly can increase at the six hundred degrees Celsius approximately. So in order to have a less metal mold reaction, you can do this. So how can I get to understand at what temperature I should be pouring the metal? We have scientific equipments called like DAC, differential scanning calorometry to get the exact melting temperature of the alloy. But that's going to be costing and we may not have an access to it, but this simple grid test would be another alternative. So here we have a grid, this grid is around ten into fifteen kind of grid, so this is a wax. You can place such wax pieces into a tree in the top, middle and bottom. And then you pour at the minimum temperature and see whether the grid has completely filled in top, middle and bottom. So that temperature, you can start with around thousand degrees Celsius, if it didn't fill completely, then go with slightly higher, one thousand fifty, not fifty, thousand twenty rather. If it didn't completely fill, you can go still higher, thousand fifty that way. So the moment when you get to understand the complete filling of this thing, then freeze the temperature as the minimum temperature which the, will have a proper filling of the casting. And this wax grid can be for thick, can be for thin, can be for medium, that depends upon the thickness of the cast pieces you have to take. So here, this is how the microscopically the solidification will happen. See the blue color thing which you see here, that is actually the liquid gold. And the solidification will start like a tree, it's like a Christmas tree you can consider. And the solidification will start from the liquid to the, this thing, solid. So while you see that there are some liquid trapped in between the solid. If you cut the section and see, this is how it looks like, the liquid metal will be feeding to the solidification. And there will be some spots where there is no liquid to fill because solids are pulling the side, solids are spreading to the side and there's some vacancy in between, there's no cap. The gap is actually called as porosity. The, to avoid this, there are some options. So there's something called direction solidification. So what it means is, in a piece, let's say ring, finger ring, the prong is the last tip of the leaf. It should start solidification from there and all the way it should come through the tree, that is this thing. So what I mean is, the thinnest section should be the last, followed by thicker, 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 thicker to the tree, that is the wax. If you do not have that configuration, if you have thin followed by thick, then again followed by thin. Then the solidification will start from this side as well and this side as well and in between you'll be stuck with liquid. So that liquid will be then considered to be poroscopic later. But pulling is happening from this side and this side, then we have porosity. I have two videos for you, the one on the left is a design, similar looking design both are, but the cross section we have changed. Can you please click the left side of the image? You see, this is a simulation in which the gray is solidified into metal, but the blue is in liquid. Now, if you see that it has started in the middle and then the blue has gone towards the prong and towards the sprue also. This is bad, because the liquid should always start, I mean, solidification should always start in the farthermost, that is on prong side and then go towards the sprue. On the right side, we have a better, so the porosities not come in this, whereas the porosity will come in that. So always remember, the thinnest or the smallest cross section should be at the end followed by the tree. So you see it's splitting into two, one solidification happens there and another solidification happens here, so wherever that last blue color thing, that is where the porosity will come. So here the liquid is getting, I mean, solidification goes from right to left, so the last one, maybe the porosity will come in this sprue. And this is about the grain structure, for cast, we need, cast, we need to have a very fine grains, it's not the big ones. Because we are not going to further roll it or wire draw it unlike the high karatage alloys. So we definitely here, we need to have grain refiners, the smaller the grain, better it is. The bigger the grain, it is bad, because the cracks will propagate into the grain boundaries between the two grains and it will. If you have a bigger chunkier grains, then the crack propagation will be faster. Whereas we have fine grain size is going to be uniformly distributed and cracks will not propagate. So always use alloys with proper grain refiners. And that brings to the end of my presentation, thank you.
Do we have any questions for sir, for Mr. Prakash?
And there was additional forty-five pieces loading in eighty-five. But will the eighty-five degree not result into more turbulence and more defects? When the piece moves from, when the metal flows at a, almost at a ninety degree?
No sir, so this is actually counterintuitive, but the metal which is, there are two conditions. One is you need to remove the wax, the angle which is around forty-five, fifty degrees, you usually keep is to remove the wax when the investment is ulta. So wax will easily flow and then, while it comes the other way, you are now forcing the gold into So wax will easily flow and then while it comes the other way, you are now forcing the gold into this thing and chances are it will break the investment at the tips of this thing. So when you have a right angle, that is ninety, ninety or eighty-five, eighty-five would be optimal, I would tell. In the ultra position, you can remove the wax, it is easy to flow. Whereas if you change it in gold, put it in one eighty degree and let the gold flow. The gold not rapidly rush into this, it will fill, then it will fill the next one, then it will fill the next one that way. It's not going to create more turbulence because there is no sharp edges, so it's filling, filling, filling.
They are mostly for fingers. How will it is possible to make chains, pendants and like that sir? Chain, is also same like that or how?
Chain would be usually done on a mechan, machine process, that is it will have a wire and it will, wire will be made into some form and cut and then it will be laser or flame soldered, that is. So what we are talking about is the investment casting process. Pendant, the center part of the pendant could be cast. If it is going to be handmade, that is twenty-two carat usually would be handmade. You have punches and machines to create the dies and this thing. So what I am mostly talking is about eighteen carat, fourteen carat stud, that is with the diamonds. So here there is no form change, that is there is no rolling or punching operation that way.
No, the reason mostly now we are getting casting chains also. That is why I want to clarify whether the process is the same or change also.
If it is going to be mechanical linkage, that is going to be free, free form. It is difficult to cast.
Okay.
It's not impossible, but it's difficult to cast. But it is very easy to make in a machine.
Machine, correct.
That way. But when the linking is bigger, for example, it's not just normal chain links, but like a pendant having some pieces with some stones and this thing. Then we have a open overing, that will be solder later.
Oh, nice.
The soldering could be using laser or could be flame-based soldering also.
So part of the, what of the chain can be made by casting?
Cast and then.
And we can finish the chain.
Yes.
Thank you, bye.
Information regarding the new alloys, she has mentioned everything. Because in nine-one-six, without compromising it, a lot of solid things are suffering. So any new alloys you can able to explain to us?
At nine-one-six you mean sir?
Exactly. Or even eighteen.
Next session is going to be, if she mention about alloys, okay then, then I'll go, I'll keep the question for the next session.
Especially one, I mean since I have worked in twenty-two carat hard alloy, I would share something. Twenty-two hard, I mean alloy is soft in nature. It has having around eighty-five H V hardness, whereas eighteen carat yellow gold, if you compare, it will be having one fifty H V hardness. Roughly double that, I would tell in terms of hardness and strength. There are alloying elements which you can add in a very small quantity without affecting the color of the gold. Because the more copper you add, the more strength will increase, but the color will go for a toss. And I have even achieved something like one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty H V in twenty-two carat with adding some alloying element. That is through age hardening, that is heat treatment you need to do. So this alloy forms a precipitate and that precipitates will strengthen. It's like a age hardenable or a heat treatable alloy, that is. But the one problem is with this kind of thing is you'd be more technical as in it cannot be easily done. If you heat it, that hardness will go. So this should be the last part in the heat treated, heat treatment should be there. So once you complete the jewelry, then put it in a furnace at a certain time and temperature, then you get a harder alloy.
Once again, for the people that have joined us now, we welcome you to the India Gold Conference here in Chennai. And this is a very special session curated for our very special guests here. And for each one of you who's here, thank you so much for taking the time out to be here. Having said that, since the discussion about alloys has just begun, let me tell you about our next speaker, who himself is nothing less than a master alloy. Comprising of some very smart qualities, he's somebody who has the wisdom of experience, academic excellence and innovation and a career that's as lustrous as gold itself. Gentlemen, I'm talking about none other than the president works of M M T C PAM Private Limited, Mr. Ankur Goyal. With twenty-nine years in precious metal line, with eighteen years in gold and silver jewelry manufacturing through lost wax investment casting method and eleven years in gold and silver refining and minted coin production, he has an in-depth knowledge of gold and silver metallurgy, master alloys, gold and silver refining from Mind Door. And he is a P E metallurgy from I I T Rurki and M E metallurgy from I I S C Bangalore and has also attended a senior management program at I I M Kolkata. An eminent master speaker for the topic that's coming up, please put your hands up for Mr. Ankur Goyal.
Morning everybody. Before I start, I think I would like to thank Mr. Srivasa for curating, for allowing us to curate this session. Because India, what I've seen in the last thirty years, India has a huge amount of technical knowledge, but it's all confined. It's all confined to individual industry. There's a very less sharing which is happening between the jewelers. And but what we want to bring slowly to this industry is how we can expose this to the people. I have attended L B M A seminars where there is a two-day conference fully technical and there is a whole lot of knowledge which is shared. I think this is the first sessions which we have started. There was one which was done in two thousand eighteen by Jemen Jewelry Skill Council. And I think as we go along and with all your support, we should be able to really bring lot of technical things because end of the day, manufacturing is the key to jewelry. And if we can really do a high-quality jewelry, it will be known not only in India but also worldwide. So before, so let me start with this topic on master alloys, I think, okay, sorry. To the, a bit on M M T C PAM, a very short one, just to highlight what M M T C PAM does. And then I'll go more into the technical on manufacturing. As Arul has rightly pointed out on casting and a lot of the whole industry, there's a huge amount of handmade jewelry made. What are the defects, what are the causes? And then coming to the subject which I would like to share on master alloys. I think everybody knows what is master alloy. I'll just repeat the, what it has, what are the advantages and then I would also like to talk a bit, although I have not included in this topic, a bit on the gold. Because gold is one thing, it is very important and a lot of people feel, they get the gold, they get the scrap, refine it and reuse it. But what actually is the main issue with gold is what I would like to highlight in a small presentation here. So as M M T C PAM, it is one of the India's big gold refinery. We are into a lot of activities like bullion trading, scrap refinery. We made minted coins, we make master alloys. The other is on the digital side, but what I would like to say is very important is how do we refine gold? And how do we bring to the industry one of the best master alloys which is, which is technically on a very higher platform equaling to what the India has seen from imported manufacturers. So this is what Arul just said. This is the whole process of casting where you have the master pattern, you are vulcanizing, you have the rubber molds, you have wax injections, then you do the cast investment and then you do the casting. So why I have highlighted all these twelve steps? What we feel is each of this step has its own importance. Because if we don't do each of this process properly, we will not be able to avoid these defects which you see in the jewelry like porosity, hard spots, cracking, rough surface, oxide inclusion. It's not that there is only one thing which can solve all these problems. Like as you had said in the, seen in the earlier presentation, porosity is not just if you get the best gold or if you get the best master alloy, you can solve all these defects, it's not that. You need to have, for the porosity, you need to really have a good screw design and good flow of metal. Otherwise, you will have shrinkage porosity, hard spots. Again, here hard spots are inclusions. There you can really help with the use of a good master alloy or use of a good gold. Cracking, again, it happens because of the metal. So you can, it also depends on the temperature where you'll have to control the mold temperature or the investment temperature. But cracking can be controlled better using a good master alloy and a good gold. Rough surface is purely depending on the investment casting, what you have seen, how you screw up, how you do the investment casting, how you maintain the temperature. So alloys and gold can help it, but definitely the process has to be controlled and inclusions is definitely because of the, the metal which we use. Or there can be another inclusions if you don't have a process that investment powder or unburnt carbon is going as an inclusion. So casting technology is a complex thing, it's not so easy as we see it. And sometimes we say, oh no, the master alloy is not good or the gold is not good. It's not that, it involves lot of other parameters also. Same thing goes with handmade, you, many of the people know we have the best carriers in the world and they make really good jewelry. But point is, do they really get it first time right or they'll have to rework the jewelry? And these are the various steps followed like you do drawing, casting, finishing, setting. So all these steps may not work out if you don't have a proper machinery, if there is a roll misalignment, there's a roll bending. Edge, when you are rolling, if you don't have a proper alloyed metal, you may result into cracking. So there will be fins and laps or even joints. So all these steps, master alloy is one of the very important factor which can help you in getting your good jewelry. And what I see and what I'll present, it is both master alloy as well as the gold. Plus all the processes, processes, people are slowly getting very good, very, they know, they do a process. There are consultants who can advise you on that. But what happens for the use of a right master alloy or a use of a right gold? So what is master alloy? And everybody knows they are all here, but I'll just try to state is pure gold when added with, suppose it's twenty-two carat, eight point five percent, you add different alloys. What is this alloy? Lot of people earlier times just used to add silver, copper. But silver, copper would not probably give you the right quality, right color. So you need to add certain other elements. So each of the master alloys, whether it is done by our company or whether it is done by imported companies, we have, a lot of people are using united alloys or Legor alloys. And everybody has got an in-depth technical knowledge because each of the master alloys has at least seven, eight elements. Which I'll just take you what each element helps in. So and you can get various colors, yellow, white, pink, silver color, silver alloys which are there in the market. So this is the whole range. I'll answer one of the questions, which is the right alloy, there is no right alloy. Depends on what you want, what quality you want, what color you want. And as you go along with the presentation, you will see each company tries to make thirty, forty, fifty alloys because every person is a different person. And it also depends on individuals, like there has been some alloys, like if you have seen earlier times, you had the rin became a thing for the day or surf excel became thing. Same thing has happened in alloying. Alloy came in nineteen ninety-eight and there were few alloys which really worked out well for the jewelers and then they started using it and then they wanted to change a bit. The company developed a new alloy and then they started using it. So each alloy can be curated, I would say, for an individual company. Most of them try to use the, what is the universal, even in our company, I say we have all sorts of alloys for yellow gold casting or yellow gold mechanical work or you have for white gold or you for pink gold. But point is how, what a company wants, like just now Arul had said, hard alloy. Lot of industry wants hard alloy. But definitely twenty-two carat with only eight percent addition, hard alloy is difficult and that's why you have to go for age hardening. So the most important thing for an alloy is what kind of ingredients you are using. Every company tries to use good integrator, there are lot of local alloys being made, but they give only a certain characteristic because until as you use a good amount of pure silver, you will not be able to get it. And these are the various, what you can say, good things which everybody achieves by using a la, a higher productivity, good luster, homogeneity, less tarnish, minimum gold loss, good hardness and toughness. And this is what I would say, on a technical line, I'm going a bit more into a technical line, is the whole range of metals. We don't use all, but I would say copper, zinc, silver has been used with ages, I would say hundred to hundred, five hundred years old. But what has come in, new elements have come in which has helped into the jewelry manufacturer, I would say. There's cobalt which has come in, there's nickel which has come in, there is germanium which has come in, there is boron silicon which are there, there's gallium which is there, there's indium which is there. Some of these alloys which are around this has helped us to make alloys which is beneficial and which can give the right properties. So I've just listed on few things, like silver definitely everybody adds it because it gives us good luster. Copper gives, helps even a bit of hardness and is ductile. Zinc is the most important thing because that helps in fluidity. Silicon, very important for your casting jewelry because it helps as a de-oxidizer, but it can be a deterrent also. Lot of people say, let me add silicon, it's not that. How much you add it because above a certain percentage, silicon forms oxides and will result into cracking. So it has to be a very balanced amount of addition. Germanium also acts as a de-oxidizer. Then you have nickel and palladium here which can help you to make white gold alloys. Boron is very good for your handmade because it acts as a grain refiner which is there. Cobalt again is the most important thing for twenty-two carat because it acts as a hardener and it can give you a hard alloy. Indium definitely is one thing which we use a lot on our solders because indium is low melting point. So it can reduce your same, it can give you a good color along with copper, silver, but can have a lower melting point so you can solder it. And gallium is at room temperature, it's in a liquid state, but it's a very good hardening effect. So you can see what I just stated earlier, uh, uh, sorry, what I just stated earlier was there are huge lot of elements which are there. And then we try to see, okay, you have a defect, you may have a problem with your process, how an alloy helps it. Like if you see, I'm not going to read this out, but you see gas porosity can be really met with having a good silicon, amount of silicon because that comes, as Arul also had explained, because of the sulfur dioxide breaking up into alchium oxide, sulfur dioxide and oxygen is released. Same thing, shrinkage porosity is when you are going adding nickel or cobalt to, cobalt for increasing hardness or nickel, you are adding for getting the white gold, they are all high temperature. And when you go higher temperature, definitely shrinkage porosity, this thing. So you need to have a good screw location, screw design. So here the metal or alloy may not have an effect for this, but it is better to have a better processing parameter. Inclusions we discussed really has to be controlled, which is there. Other thing is oxide inclusions which can be met better if we can have copper, oxygen-free copper. Because again, if copper has lot of oxygen, if you use a local copper, if it has oxygen, then it will give oxygen into this thing which will act with silicon or copper will form copper oxide and that will have a problem and will result into hard spots. Same thing is cracking as I explained, copper, silicon and silicon cannot be just added or boron cannot be just added. It has to be alloyed with copper before you add it in a proper way. And silicon, copper, silicon, if the ratio is high, silicon becomes a very bad thing for jewelry. It's a best, I would say, for casting jewelry, but it has to be used in the proper, this thing. Roughness and oxidation you can really control by small amounts of zinc addition. So this is just, we have highlighted few things in the, so as to for you to just understand, but there's a huge lot of things which it will be difficult to present in the short seminar. What I've just highlighted is how the journey goes. Suppose there was a company, he was using some alloys, but they were facing some problems of microporosity. We checked with them, we tried to first, we didn't, there was no offer of any master alloy. We checked with them, says let's change the screw location and design. Then we developed an alloy with silicon de-oxidizer, gave it to them. Their idea was silver should be less, the price should be less because definitely the competition was there. So we changed the silver, copper ratio within the same price range. They wanted more luster, say that the luster is less. So okay, let's add germanium. So okay, let's add germanium and a new sample started working. So it's a journey which has happened for individual jewelers. Uh we can curate, we can suggest them which is the alloys which can be used. And and the same is done by any of the other manufacturers also. So it's, in short, what I can say, it is a, you need to get the right connect. Get the right type of alloy to get a good casting. Uh now I will just say, ki, lot of people say it's master alloy is a defect or the process is a defect, it's not. In many cases, it's the gold. We do refining by two processes, one is by chemical refining, by electrolytic refining. Electrolytic refining results into removal of impurities. Chemical refining also can result into removal of impurities if done in a very controlled way. But if you miss it out, you will get all these defects which are here. This is the one which is done at our company, so we have tested it out, you have only silver and you have copper in ppm level. And this is the gold because we also, I showed you, we also refine scrap. We get a lot of pure gold from the market and when we test it out, we even found having antimony, arsenic, iron. Uh there were some magnes and all this, there was some tin also there. All these elements in gold will act as a hard spot, as a defect. So you should whenever you manifest, and you won't realize if you say I've got a pure gold, it is nine nine five. In certain cases, there is a purity difference also, it is nine nine five or it is nine nine nine. But you should realize that you should see, they should not have these inclusions. So this is a very, very important factor which I want to share with everybody is you should also see how you check your gold. And these are the few things, a lot of people say my trees have got black. Okay, after pickling, it will turn into the shiny this thing. But it also is because of the impurities which are present in the gold or they may get cracking. Like you see, they may get cracking which is there. And so uh how we can control it, uh we have seen and we have done lots of experiments. Gold is very important, get the right kind of gold, get the right kind of quality of gold, you will have no problems. And what I would say, I've seen a lot of people say it's costly. Like I'll tell you, I've I've been very closely interacting with Titan also, they buy only imported gold. They buy only the L B M A refined gold. Do I? Because they know to avoid these impurities, they can get the best jewelry. You may buy it at a bit higher cost, but what you save, you save your rejections. Even if you have a five, ten percent, fifteen percent rejection, if you save on that, you have got that cost. So these are some of the trees which have been cast, we're using various alloys, various gold, local gold or uh gold with this thing. And various alloys and these are from the customer side, I would say, that's why you can get your best quality. Only do a bit of research and this thing and master alloy definitely as you go along, you will see. Uh lot of help which you can get from various companies on master alloys. Thank you, that's what I can say.
Questions for Arun sir? Please put your hand up in case there's any. Sir, we are sending the mic.
Thank you for actually your presentation. Uh how you are differentiate, I mean anti-tarnish and uh. Uh tarnish resistant in silver alloy. Because actually you said I mean two alloys in silver, one is actually uh super white, one is ultra white. So how you are differentiating both alloys?
So to check the anti-tarnish property, there is a, there is a proper process where you use ammonia. Ammonium, you pass, you keep it in a desiccator with ammonia and this and after some certain time. If it tarnishes, uh then the alloy or anything doesn't have that anti-tarnish property. Or if it doesn't and if it can withstand that, then your alloy is this thing. We can, we can share you that, I don't know, remember the exact process what is there, but there is a definite process which is there. Sorry, H, Adhibashis, you can.
Uh now, when you are talking of silver, uh it's a different challenge. Because silver has got huge propensity to absorb oxygen during melting and normally it exhibits. When you have polished, after some time, you will find there are some spots coming up, uh which we call fire scale. The other part is when you are doing silver nine to five jewelry, ninety-three percent specifically. After few days, you start getting it looking yellow or sometimes a little more blackish and ultimately more black. So this process is an oxidation process. For pure silver, when I'm talking of pure silver, it is a delayed process because it happens only due to silver. Pure silver doesn't get oxidized except when attacked with sulfur. But when you are talking of nine three five, this is a process because you have added an alloy. Where copper is predominant and copper will oxidize. If you do a coating of rhodium, it will get delayed only. Now, as sir has said, Ankur sir has said, there are alloys where you add ingredient. The noun, the name sterling alloy came when Dr. Ewan Roy, Roy. Uh uh Dr. Ewan Roy something, who was working for a company called Sterling in UK. He invented this alloy where he added copper to get the best properties and that company patented as nine to five. But with copper, the yellow or the yellowness or the oxidation rate was fast. So then silicon came, so that was considered as a new age alloy where silicon is added. So when you add silicon, you are actually giving it an antioxidant property which gets prolonged. It's not anti-tarnishing, it's an antioxidant property. When you are talking of anti-tarnishing, it normally talks of a dip or a coating. Antioxidative property, so you add silicon. But with silicon also, after few months or depending on your use, you get yellowness. So the research give that now let's add germanium. So then came the germanium. So what sir has said, what alloys we have got, we have got the range where you have the silicon, which gives you some protection. Some protection from oxidation for few months, maybe one year depending on your use. But if you add germanium, that poor, that period gets prolonged, there is no guarantee that will not get oxidized. But with the correct use of additive, either silicon or germanium or a combination of that. You can only delay that oxidation process and your piece will continue to look bright move. So that's the difference.
So uh what you are asking is for silver only because gold doesn't tarnish. Only for silver. Ha, okay, it's for silver mainly because gold doesn't tarnish, yeah, that's, that's.
Because you differentiate in both alloys, one is actually ultra white, one is super white.
Yes.
That's all.
Any more?
Thank you.
Any more questions please? So I think Ankur sir, with this we wind up please. With anti-tarnish and antioxidant. I'm sure you all put your hands up for him, but for everyone that's right up till the back. Gentlemen, just to let me know that you're here and you're attentive, can I see your hands up in the air, can I hear you clap? People at the back, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I am Meghavopar. From Emerald Gold Industry India Limited. So here I am going to speak about electroforming technology. First of all, I would like to thank Sri Vashtava, Mr. Sri Vashtava and India Gold Conference people. For giving this opportunity to deliver regarding electroforming technology, this lovely dice. Everybody knows about many technologies available in Indian market. Like casting, stamping, impress, handmade. And machine-made jewelry and all and so on. So as per the age, the technology of jewelry industry has been improved. And adopted new, new technologies. One among the technologies is called electroforming technology. So Emerald Gold Industry, we proudly, I can say, first time in India, we have adopted this technology. In two thousand seven, for past fifteen years, we are using this technology. And we are producing both gold and silver jewelry and articles. So hope, this is the first time everybody knows about the technology, how we are producing. I think no, not much people are discussing regarding electroforming technology. So this is the basics of electroforming, I'm going to explain to you. So electroforming technology follows with so many aspects. So first of all, we have to understand what is electroforming, then process flow. And what are the types of electroforming products we are producing in Emerald? And benefits of electroforming products and general problems as well as challenges in electroforming. What is electroforming? Electroforming technology arises from electrolysis. When we talk about electrolysis, everybody knows about the inventor of electrolysis, Dr. Michael Faraday. He is the inventor who has started electrolysis. What is his law says, Faraday law one, it is the mass of the substance deposited at any electrode. Is directly proportional to the amount of current passed. We jewelers, we mainly producing gold and silver jewelry. After producing the jewelry, we do gold plating. Why we are doing gold plating, we have to make the jewelry appealing and shiny. See, for this know, we are doing electroplating. So electroplating also a technology of electrolysis. And second point, he says, the mass, mass of the substance substituted, deposited at any electrode. On passing the certain amount of current is directly proportional to the chemical equivalent rate. So the electrolyte, he is talking about electrolyte, the, the electrolyte, the chemistry. How strong is the chemistry according to that, we can do the best electrolysis. By using the Faraday law, one can make both electroplating and electroforming production. So everybody knows about electroplating. Electroplating, the first picture shows thin form of deposition is called electroplating. The thicker deposition called electroforming. In electroplating is a top coat for attaining surface strength, mainly for getting the surface strength. And for getting the desired color, we are plating, we are plating the jewelry. The plating thickness varies from point one micron to ten microns. In electroplating, when we call micron thickness, we have to understand the micron, what is a micron? So we, we know millimeter, one by, ten thousand of the millimeter is called one micron. So thousand micron is equal to one millimeter. So here, we are doing, all of doing flash plating. So if the thickness is varies from point one micron to maximum up to ten microns. After that, no, we cannot do in electroplating, we cannot do the plating because now it will become rough deposition or dullness. Whereas electroforming is a far, far superior process used to manufacturing jewelry products with high precision. So here, we can able to deposit gold or silver up to thickness up to six hundred microns. For the normal jewelry, our thickness is hundred and fifty micron. For the specialized jewelry or the article, big in size, we can able to increase the thickness up to six hundred microns. That's. We shall deposit multi-layers of metal or alloy over a mantel. So first step of making the electroforming jewelry, we have to make the mantel. What is a mantel? The mantel is nothing but low melting alloy, which can be casted and polished. Over the electroforming process can be started. And another mantel is there which is wax mantel. So wax is a non-conductive substance, so that now we have to make the mantel conductive by using a special yin. So you can see the picture, these are all the mantels, first mantel is low melting alloy. First picture is as cast, second picture is as polished and wax mantel also, you can see. So this is the process flow of electroforming. Electroforming process starts with jigging, cleaning process, forming process and mantel removing or emptying process. So jigging process, polished mantels are fixed over SST to form a jig. One jig can be, according to the size of the electroforming tank or the bath. We can able to increase or decrease the mantles. So start from hundred to five hundred pieces, we can incorporate in one jig. Jigs are highly conductive and hold many mantles which are taken to further process. This mantel has to be thoroughly cleaned before electroforming. So this cleaning process having three steps. One is ultrasonic cleaning with the use of mild soap solution. Ultrasonic machines are used with the ultrasonic vibration. We can remove all the dirt, dust, fingerprints, etc. So next step of cleaning is electrolytic cathode cleaning. Here, we put the mantels in the cathode with the mild alkaline solution. We electrolysis the water, it becomes, we are producing the hydrogen bubbles. By electrolysis, we are producing the hydrogen bubbles, it cleans the surface of the mantel. Which can remove scales, corrosion, oil and grease, etc. So then acidic, acidic neutralizes alkaline nature of electrocleaned mantles. And further activate the surface for good addition or addition of gold and silver. So in either gold forming or silver forming, the process is, the flow, process flow, cleaning process is the same. So before gold forming or silver forming, we have to go from pre-forming process. This is the free, pre-forming process is very, very important to metal mantel to make the surface smooth, bright. And level. Even though surface is polished well, we are having small undulations are there. So that has to be covered by chemically, this process is very helpful for covering the surface. Making the surface very smooth. So normal pre-forming uh process is done by stripe bath. This is the heart of the electroforming process. This, this process is a unique feature. The electroforming process is that the gold alloy grows over mantel atom by atom. And it, and this process impacts absolute accuracy and high aspect ratio. This aspect ratio, we have to understand the aspect ratio. Electroforming, we can produce the same dimension like the height, length, breadth. The same dimension we can able to deposit evenly and smoothly we can able to deposit. In electroforming, thickness as I told earlier ranges from hundred and fifty micron to six hundred microns. The solution or bath contains the required gold and alloy metal in the form of gold salt. As you know, we are dissolving the gold as a salt, that is gold potassium cyanide. So we are dissolving in the chemistry so that we can able to produce the jewelry. In the karat jewelry, karat twenty-two karat or eighteen karat, we have to maintain the gold as well as alloy. So here we are using alloys, two alloys mainly, one is copper, another one is indium. That also we have to maintain in the bath along with the chemistry, it is not a easy one. So many parameters are there, we have to maintain the temperature, we have to maintain the chemistry, we have to maintain the. Uh breakdown chemicals will be inside the bath, the toxins has to be removed. And time to time, we have to maintain thoroughly so that we can able to produce the electroformed jewelry. so that we can able to produce the electroformed jewelry consistently with quality. Operating the bath, as I told, continuous maintenance is necessary. Of course, we have to use very, very accurate and sophisticated electroforming machine, that is none other bath. We have to use with highly accurate microprocessor controller. Thus, according to the thickness, what we are estimating 150 micron or 200 micron, after that, electroforming process can be stopped and these jigs are removed and cleaned, it will taken to next level of, next to process called emptying process or mandrel removing process. This mandrel removing process done by two ways. One is mechanical way and another way is chemical way. In the mechanical way, we have to drill small holes in the electroforming parts and it can be removed by, by the mechanical machines. Through the holes, low melting alloy will comes out. Maybe eighty to ninety percent of the alloy will come out. And next level, chemical treatment has to be done thoroughly. Hundred percent all low melting alloy will be removed so that now our electroforming components will be hundred percent empty, hollow, get, and it is pure, it is no low melting alloy will be present inside. So types of electroforming we produce in Emre. We are producing gold electroforming as well as silver electroforming. In gold electroforming, we produce eighteen carat gold electroforming in yellow gold jewelry and we produce pink gold jewelry also. This pink gold jewelry is very, very popular nowadays, it is very popular in northern market and also picking in the southern market also. It is having the very good baby rose pink, all the ladies likes very much. It is very, very popular now. And twenty-two carat, we produce yellow gold jewelry. Then twenty-four carat also we produce. With the help of twenty-four carat, we produce idols, mainly idols. Idols are very, very popular and it is very good strength, withstandability is there. Recent past, we have improved the idol production into next level, that is called feather light gold idol. This feather light gold idol is very, very lightweight compared with normal gold idol. For the example, if a gold idol is ten grams in weight, feather light gold idol will be only twenty percent of the weight. It is around two grams, maximum up to three grams weight only. With the low weight of, less weight of gold, we can able to produce gold idols in feather light electroforming technology. And we have started producing twenty-four carat jewelry also. So very soon, we are going to launch in the domestic market. Also, we are producing fourteen carat electroforming and the ten carat electroforming. These low caratage electroformings are very, very popular in abroad. Since our buying power, customers buying power is reducing day by day, these products also indigenous designs, we are going to launch very soon in India. Other than gold, we have silver electroforming. In silver electroforming, we are making idols, mural, garlands, dia, gift item and jewelry. All silver products are triple nine purity. These are all few examples of electroformed jewelry. These are all stone rings, looks very big, weight is very less weight. These are all blind rings, different 3D structure, floral designs and as well as god designs also we can make and different contour and curves we can make, which is not easily produced by other technology like casting and handmade. These are all plain pendant sets, pendant sets with stones. These are all charms, charms are nothing but smaller pendants called charms. These are all few more charms. Big kadas also we can make with bangles and kadas. These are all necklaces, contemporary necklace with floral designs. These are all big pendants with chains. These are all men collection with chain with pendants, chunky pendants. It weighs, start from seventeen grams to and so on. These are all gold idols. Dresslet we can make. These also are very less weight, start from fourteen grams, twelve grams, fourteen grams, forty-four grams like that. These are earrings. Earrings with turn and twist. So these are all mukhapu chains. These mukhapu are made by electroforming, with the normal chain we have fixed. So this is the, as I told, eighteen carat pink gold, very, very attractive baby pink. The special feature of electroforming pink gold, it is difficult to tarnish. As I told you, the gold is depositing over the mandrel atom by atom so that now the structure of the item of the product such as, it is not tarnish so easy. I won't say it won't tarnish, it will tarnish. It is difficult to tarnish, very long durable durability will be there. These are all gold electroformed idols, pure gold idols. So this is the feather light idol. We start manufacturing feather light idol from one gram to twelve grams. Very, very lightweight, looks very big. Silver idols. Silver murals, other photo frames. Silver garlands. Lambs. Gift item and showpieces. So these are all the benefits. What, we can able to produce jewelry idols in big in size but weighs very light. Three dimensional products can be made out of this technology. None other technology can be used for making that three dimensional process. With electroforming technology, very easy and we can able to produce three dimensional process, products. These components, electroformed components are very hard, even with 0.15 mm thickness, 150 microns, these are all very hard. And it gives a very shiny surface and with good strength. Wearability, durability is very good. People can have the regular usage or occasional usage. It is very, very good for wear. It, it won't, it is light in weight but strength is good, very good. So we have fifteen years of non-stop experience in this field. We can able to produce accurate electroforming products. We also make customized electroformed idols such as elderly person, we can replicate the picture and we can able to make the portraits. It starts from the picture, the sculpting, from sculpting to end result we are doing. And one more interesting product is football and shoe. These are all FIFA shoe and football, this is very famous in Dubai market. So FIFA World Cup, best players are presented by golden shoe. The replica of the golden shoe we are making for Dubai market even, it is very, very popular and it is, we are making most of the football, we are making for FIFA Dubai people. So electroforming idols, for example, if you do the casting idol, it comes weights around 1.1 kilo. With the help of electroforming, we can produce the silver idols with seventy grams. So only ten percent of the weight, we can able to produce electroformed idols. These are all some gold items. So gold rings, it can be produced in casting seventeen grams, we could produce with six grams in electroforming. And charms, some of the charms and rings, four grams in casting, we can able to produce in electroforming with 1.5 grams. So, it is, we are also facing lot of challenges in electroforming. Electroforming is not easy. It is like now when we mix the chemicals, mix the gold, mix the copper in the bath, controlling the mechanism is very, very difficult and tricky. So always know we will get problems like blister, roughness, nodular deposition, purity control, purity control problem, dullness and soldering property. So these are the major controlling parameters, we have to be controlled. Otherwise, lot of defects will come, lot of rejection will come. The purity control is the major part. If instead of eighteen carat, seventy-five purity, if we make seventy-four purity, it directly it has to go for melting. If the purity is higher, if the control mechanism we lose, if the purity is higher, directly we will lose the metal, it will create the loss for us. So these are the all major problems. For the past fifteen years of experience, we have come across and solved and we overcome all these problems and now we can able to produce international quality, quality electroforming products. As I told you earlier, we are the first company, we have started electroforming in the year of 2007, 2007 with the Swissman Swiss technology. We have imported all the machineries, chemistry from Swiss. Now, we have made the system suitable for Indian people and we are giving the product to the Indian market. We are striving for continuous improvement, our journey of learning is still going on. So this is the history of electroforming, which we have introduced in India and what we are doing. The glimpse of electroforming I have shown to you. Thanks for your patience, thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much sir, and do you have any questions for sir? Any questions? Alright, I think that was a very, very comprehensive presentation sir. Okay, I am setting a mic across sir, right at the back. Sir, could you please just momentarily put your hand up? Thank you so much for taking the time out sir. And we are pretty much of the Eventel Global Advisory Team. Eventel, as you are all aware, is also the organizer of the India Gold Con, to provide a platform for like-minded people and stakeholders of the industry to come together, congregate and network. The vision and the mission is way bigger than that.
Oh, my name is Shubham and thank you ma'am for saying some difficult words about Swarnadhar Shabhiya. So I am here to talk about this beautiful initiative taken none other than by the Indian gold industry and supported by the World Gold Council. So before starting the, my speech, I would like to extend my regards to the president of Jewelers and Diamond Trader Association of Madras, Mr. Jyoti L. Chakani. Thank you sir, and thank you to the delegate members and my colleagues. So, before starting this presentation, I would like to show you a video. Okay, so can I have the video please?
To live by principles, it might sound challenging, but think about it. It's quite easy to say, "I am principled." All it takes is four syllables. It's only when you walk four steps alone on a principled path that you know what it really takes. If you can continue walking, you'll find your way at every turn. The principled path is full of challenges that life throws to those who live by principles. Of course, it's possible, but it is difficult to be principled alone. You see, even principles can't do much on their own. Even principles need people to follow them like a leader. If we all follow the same principles, they can be so much more, we can be so much more. If we live by principles together, they become culture and tradition. Social values that can foster many generations in the future of our children and their children. No matter what it takes, no matter what principles demand of us, if we come through together, we reap more than we sow. So let's work together, let's rise together, let's shine together, let's stay principled together, you, me, all of us. Isim Faidah, Swarnadhar Shabhiyan, an industry initiative.
So what did we see here? The World Gold Council in the name of Swarnadhar Shabhiya is just requesting everyone to follow the path of principle. And it's not asking you to go alone, it's just asking you to take the initiative. You as an individual, if you start taking the initiative to work on the path of principles, others will follow, as you have seen in this video. And you are not doing it for yourself sake, you are doing it for the coming generation, for the future of your, so coming on to the presentation. So we can see that the Indian gold jewelry industry is at the summit value is 4.5 lakh crores in value terms, okay? And the market orientation, you will see the organized players are just twenty-five percent and the unorganized players are seventy-five percent. And to be saying here that the majority of the market is taken by the organized players here. So what is the need of the R? The R is to do the industry integration, a mechanism to protect consumers' interest, a well-guided structured operational procedure. And the most important is a self-revelatory organization. I will be talking about the self-revelatory organization in next slides. So retail gold investor investing guidance, it's like RGIP. It's an introduction by the World Gold Council and they have already implemented it in various other countries. So what is RGIP? It's all about the seven principles that you can see, so what fairness and integrity, transparency, protection of clients, assets and all these things. So, I will not talk about RGIP right now. Let's talk about Swarnadhar Shabhiya. So what is Swarnadhar Shabhiya? Once I was given this presentation in Delhi, one of the delegates asked me, if this RGIP is so successful, then why is the need of this Swarnadhar Shabhiya, such a heavy word, Swarnadhar Shabhiya? So, we are India, okay? We, we will not look at anything if it doesn't have an Indian touch and you are asking us to accept this thing. No, we will accept only if it has an Indian touch. So, from your own industry, the like more than forty members representing each and every section of the gold value chain. If you talk about gold value chains in refining, bullion dealer, detailing, all the delegates came and they designed two things. Self-assessment guide, what is the self-assessment guide? It's nothing, it's just tell you what are the things you have to do and what are the things you don't have to do. That's simple. So these things will tell you, what are the things you should do that will make your business prosper in future and what are the things you are doing right now can be a problem tomorrow. Talking about the COC, Code of Canada. So it's a self-diplated document providing a high level of guidance and it's like the fair and profitable way of doing business. So it's nothing like some coming from the moon or something like that, some technicality I am not talking about here. It's something that you already are doing it and we request you to do it in a principled way. So what is the need of the SRO in gold jewelry industry? So it's a legal entity comprised of industry participant not restricted to a single. So it's a legal entity comprised of industry participants not restricted to a single trade body. The point to be noted here, it's not restricted to a single trade body here. So it gives you a freedom and spread to convey the voice of the industry. So like if you want to talk to the government, you will go to some particular association and the government then there will be an eye here. But what if there will be a self-regulatory organization? And that will be your eyes, your ears and your mouth for the industry, for the government. So, and SRO is not a new thing in India, it has already been implemented, like MP and MFIN is already there in India and it's been done very successfully. So we as a jeweler should come up and form this SRO and be a part of this. So right now the World Gold Council is not requesting everyone to abide by the rules and something like that. It is asking you to be a part, to express your interest. Yeah, if this, this kind of initiative is there, then I will be a part, I will support this initiative. And obviously, we will be asking you how this all will be done. So very soon, like within six months or something, like there will be an SRO that will be formed from you. You people are only be a part of that SRO team and that will decide how this small trade audit will be done. Obviously, it's not like there's something, like someone will get a Swarnadashabhyaan certificate, yes, I am talking about Swarnadashabhyaan certificate. So what is this Swarnadashabhyaan certificate? So let's assume that someone having a royal infil bike, okay? So the person having a royal infil bike, they wants to be with the people having royal infil bike only, why? Because it gives them a brand, a choice brand, yeah, we write bullets, we have royal infil, we are member of royal infil family. So that's what we are talking about here, we are talking about Swarnadashabhyaan certified family. That you are a part of Swarnadashabhyaan and you are a family member of Swarnadashabhyaan. And to be a family member, you have obviously have to pass some test. So that will be a trade audit that will be done by the SRO team and it has not been decided what kind of trade audits. So let the SRO team be formed and let be decided. So that expression of interest, I think my colleagues are distributing it to you. It is an expression to tell you that yeah, if the SRO will be formed, I am ready to give the industry what is needed. So that's all and I will be here only, for any doubt you can ask me, please.
Any questions for Mr. Shubham for now? Yes sir, we are sending a mic across, let's give a mic to Anko sir please.
I just wanted to know, has this program started and have any jewellers enrolled in this program or how many?
Yeah, so this program has already been started, actually, this program was started two, three years long, but the World Gold Council has been serious this year only, that is within seven, six month. And within six month, we have already enrolled more than three fifty to four hundred jewellers to be a part of Swarnadashabhyaan across India. And if you talk about not only jewellers, refiners, bullion dealers, like retailers, everyone. So yeah, yeah, participation level is high, we have a very much good reach in social media and the talk is good. So you can see the industry is buzzing about Swarnadashabhyaan.
And self-regulation is a, you know, misnomer here. Unless and until some regulating agency crops in, you know, you say self to, to get yourself self-regulated, it's easier said than done. So how are we planning to make it, you know, viable, productive?
So yeah, so the idea behind this, that the World, the World Gold Council first form a SRO and they will be guiding it in the late, for first phase, okay? So when everything will be set up, when the audit, trade audits, whatever trade audits, home to certify, home not to certify, all these things will be decided. Then the World Gold Council will withdraw its, uh like participation. That, then it will be called as self-regulatory organization formed by the industry leader. So for the first phase, the World Gold Council will be guiding it, but after a later part, they have no plans to be a part of SRO. And like if you say that the industry is complicated, yeah, I understand, industry is very much complicated. And saying just like self-regulatory organization, it's not going to make sense and it's not an easy task. Obviously, I am not saying it's an easy task, that's why we ask everyone from that video, you as an individual, start taking the initiative of being on the path of principle, we will follow you.
Add on to my concern and to your response.
Yes sir.
I think World Gold Council is not only a national premier agency but an internationally premier agency which is promoting gold, right, propagating gold. And this industry has seen that regulation brings prosperity, more business, accountability and all that stuff, you know, business growths. And it's not about the participation, continual, continuous participation or withdrawal of World Gold Council that I am speaking. I am not a pessimist. But my contention is unless and until there are some regulatory bodies.
Yeah.
There is some penalty applied to it, as you must have seen, you know, the moment, government made hallmarking mandatory. People were up in arms, a lot of trade associations also, they said we will strive, we will do this, we will do that, you know, all nine years. And ultimately, now you see that people, consumers in general have more faith on jewelry than they, they used to have before, you know. Before the onset of mandate, you know, mandatory hallmarking and UID.
Let's give him a round of applause, sir.
Thank you all. This job, God, we should do, it's happening. It means for Chennai, the first time, the first time, so they came to me, I mean, they came to me, how to do it? So our association with them, whatever happens, they gave us help. They are also doing good, for our success, for my success, thank you.
You are so generous, you came between the events, and Channani sir said exactly. The relationship between Chennai and Chennai is greater than the relationship between Chennai and Chennai. And here we have some major players in our industry, so can we please have the tree up here? If it stays, it will be fun, if the session is good, if it ends, it will be fun. Inviting of course our next speaker, here maybe more but I can only hear three people clap. Inviting up next, Mr. Venkatesh Kopal Karan. Sir, you can come here too. Mr. Shubham from Eventel. Do we have Shubham ji or has he just stepped out? Okay. Thank you and I am sure Swarnadashabhyaan will generate a lot of curiosity and hope you get a lot of support from the industry. Everyone, your speakers for this morning, for the academic session that started the conference. With this, everyone, as we come to the conclusion of this session, as I invite each one of you to step out and visit the